Thank you for joining us for this joint committees with the Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs and our good friends from the Committee on Higher Education. It's three o'clock in on this February 4th in room 016. And this hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. If there's any type of technical issues, we will post a notice as to when we will be convening. And for those who are testifying, we ask that you limit your testimony to one minute. We have one item on this agenda that is Senate Bill 993 relating to geothermal exploration. First in our testifiers list, we have Mark Lick from the State Energy Office.
Thank you Chair, Chairs and members of the committees. Mark Lick, the Hawaii State Energy Office. I stand by our testimony and strong support of this measure, but I did want to point out how critically important it is at this time, I think, for the legislature to provide the seed funding for energy cell sufficiency. I mean frankly, there aren't many solutions that can ensure energy cell sufficiency and with low cost renewable firm energy like geothermal. And we think it's been too long underutilized. So we see a two-step pathway in which we conduct outreach in the communities to find the appropriate locations where it's acceptable and then to conduct the research to be able to identify with specificity, exactly where the resources are so that we can then follow up with RFPs for independent power producers to produce it. There's a clear strategy in the administration about pursuing.
Time's up.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Mariah Yoshizu from Ulapono.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mariah Yoshizu on behalf of Ulapono Initiative. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure, also noting HSEO's testimony for their preference for SB 1339. Just wanted to say that we are also supportive of using that measure as the vehicle for geothermals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mariah. I have a supportive testimony from Keith Neal, Jacob Westnick, and Alice Kim. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 993? If not, members, the two chairs have conferred and considering that we had passed just last week, a bill that is very similar to this, that was Senate Bill 1068. It's been the decision by the two chairs that we will defer any further action on this measure. Any discussion? If not, the origin. Thank you for your patience. We're convening the Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs on this February 4th at 2:00, excuse me, 1:02 in the afternoon room 016. Just to reiterate, we're streaming this hearing live on YouTube and if there's any technical difficulties that we have to postpone and reschedule this hearing, we will post public notice of when that date will be. And those who are testifying, we are going to limit your testimony to one minute. On this 302 agenda, first we have Senate Bill 73 relating to county permit. On our testifiers list, we have Donna Puna from DPP has submitted commentary. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 73? If not, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill 100 relating to intoxicating liquor. On our testifiers list, we have Jennifer Waheha Pope or Christopher Lyon, who might be joining us via Zoom.
Not present on Zoom Chair.
Oh, sorry.
We've gone via Zoom.
In person.
Good afternoon Chair, Senator Richards and Senator Coit. Jennifer Waheha Pope, Deputy Attorney General on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. We have submitted testimony on this Senate Bill 100 with comments just to relay our concerns regarding a missing comma and that the effect of the missing comma may not, they have an effect on the section that the legislature does not intend to have. And so we're just asking that a comma be placed after the phrase that was added. And then we have a few technical non-substantive recommendations.
Yeah, you guys are good at grammar punctuation.
I hope so, but I'm here for any questions in case there are any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For joining us Jennifer. Arthur Venter from the Maui Arts and Cultural Center has submitted testimony in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in Senate Bill 100? If not, members, any questions? No? Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill 202 relating to renewable energy. On our testifiers list, we have Leo Assunction from PUC.
Hi there. My name is Abby Austin with the Public Utilities Commission standing in for our Chair and I stand on our testimony providing comments and I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you Abby. Michael Angelo from DCCA.
Hi Chair, members, Mickey Knox for the Division of Consumer Advocacy. We'll just stand on our written comments, but we're available for any questions.
Thank you for joining us. Susan Emery from the Green Party has submitted testimony in support. Christopher Dean from Recycle Hawaii might be joining us via Zoom.
Not present on Zoom Chair.
And we have supportive testimony from Helen Cox, Nanea Lo, Melody Aduhua, and another dozen, actually maybe another 20 people all in support. Actually, one person, Kailanis Shinsato from Hawaiian Electric, oh, might be here. Sorry, jumping ahead of myself. Thanks, Kailanis.
Aloha Chair and members of the committee, Kailanis Shinsato on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. We respectfully oppose HB 202. This would effectively do away with the forfeiture feature of the NEM program, but this feature actually benefits all of our customers, including customers who live in condos or who don't have rooftop PV or who are struggling to pay their electric bills. So this is a good feature of the program that we would like to keep. And if we do away with it, then that would only benefit NEM customers who have already sort of gained a windfall of benefits just by being on the program. So we do ask the committee to carefully consider the equity impact that this bill would have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kailanis. Sherry Pollak from 350 Hawaii might be joining us via Zoom.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, aloha Chair and committee members. My name is Sherry Pollak and I'm representing 350 Hawaii. We stand in very strong support of this measure and I really appreciate you hearing it. It's important to recognize that solar power and net energy metering benefits society as a whole, not just specific individuals or communities. Shifting a greater portion of our electricity generation to solar helps keep our air clean and is one of the best tools to mitigate global heating. It also stabilizes the electrical grid and makes us more resilient in the face of natural disaster. Now, there's several myths targeting net energy metering that are important for lawmakers to be aware of, and we've highlighted those in our written testimony. And one of these false narratives I want to address is the myth that net energy metering benefits only the rich. The truth is, and I speak from personal experience and findings from independent research as well, that rooftop solar is actually largely a middle-class phenomenon. Net energy metering is one of the things that makes solar affordable for these families. Additionally, policies supporting equitable access programs can further this trend, reducing the disparity between solar and non-solar users, programs such as. Thank you so much for hearing this measure.
Thank you, thank you for joining us. David Milinix.
Aloha, Dave Monix from Greenpeace Hawaii. I want to follow up on what Sherry Pollak just said. I'm a moderate income make earner and live in a moderate income neighborhood. And we got, we bit the bullet and came up with the money to put solar panels on our house and immediately reduced, I'm surprised how quickly we paid them off from the cost savings from our utility bills and because we have net metering. Our neighborhood is all moderate income and there are multiple homes here who have solar panels on their roof. So this bogus argument that it's going to hurt people who aren't moderate income or aren't rich is not true. That's my personal experience. The Brooking Institution report titled Rooftop Solar Net Metering Does It Benefit? Reviewed multiple studies and the costs and they came up with the economic benefits of net metering actually outweighs the cost and imposed no significant cost increase to non-solar customers. Vermont Public Service Department said the same thing. Main Utility, Utility Commission said the same thing. Lawrence Berkeley National Lab said the same thing.
Thank you, thank you Dave.
So much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Members, we have, I've counted 31 others in support and one opposed. And that one opposition that's still left is David Bissou. Welcome, Mr. Chris.
Aloha Chair, Senators Henry Curtis with Life of the Land. I think this bill can be tailored very narrowly. There is a person who got net energy metering when they had a household of five members. They're now down to one member. They're giving the utility a lot of free energy each month. It's more than the minimum monthly charge. They're giving the electricity free, but still getting the charge. To me, that seems unfair. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 202? Members, any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill 1234 relating to government efficiency, governmental efficiency. On our testifiers list, we have Bonnie Kahakui, we're someone from the State Procurement Office.
Good afternoon Chair and members of the committee. Matthew Chow testifying on behalf of Bonnie Kahakui of the State Procurement Office. The State Procurement Office stands on its testimony with comments.
Thank you, Senator Chow. Sandy Ma from the Legal Clinic, testified in testimony, commented. Ivan Ho with Suggested Amendments from Local 5, Craig Nakamoto, HCD.
Good afternoon Chair and members of the committee. Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director of the Hawaii Community Development Authority. We speak in support of this bill. We've submitted written testimony. We are helping other state agencies and have helped other state agencies with the knowledge and experience that we have. So we're in full support of this bill, Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Nakamoto. Randy Perer from HGE.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Newey Sebastian with HGE. I will send our written testimony in opposition to this measure. I just want to emphasize that we view this measure as an open door to privatized government services. Mahalo.
Leah Ryan Gill has submitted commentary. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1234? Members, any questions? Oh, you're moving along quickly, just like 1234. Senate Bill 1336 relating to the Greenhouse Gas Sequestration Task Force. For this measure, we have Director Tokioka from DBED.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. DBED stands on its submitted testimony in support and is available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you Dave. Mary Alice Evans from the Office of Planning.
Good afternoon Chair and members. Mary Alice Evans with the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. With conflicted feelings, I urge your support for this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1336? If not, members, any questions?
I asked me, go on DBED.
Senator Favella.
You know, I totally understand the concept of what we're trying to accomplish, but there is, is there any study that you guys have that, you know, talking about transportation and climate change in adopting these new energy conservation situations? So and what of, what is the transportation alternative that you guys are seeking? Would, not you guys, but in this bill will be seeking for?
Senator, this bill focused on three areas of climate mitigation. One was reducing carbon emissions from agriculture. A second was reducing carbon or increasing carbon sequestration in aquaculture. And the third was studying the benefits of putting green infrastructure in urban areas like trees in, you know, residential areas to provide shade to reduce heat stress due to carbon increase in the atmosphere. The legislature did not assign this task force the role of looking at transportation mitigations.
The reason I bring that up is because it's great to plant trees for shade, but how much oxygen some of these trees actually going to put out? Because I get planted trees in my area and the wind blowing them down. Because again, it doesn't work in certain areas. You never think of other greenery and other stuff that you guys can, can do to mediate this situation because, you know, I don't, I don't agree on some of the stuff about the carbon footprint in our community and just my opinion. Because I want to know how much is the actual footprint, I mean, it's not your guys' bill. How, if you know, you answer it. How much carbon footprint you think that we have, that we need to mediate?
I agree with you Senator, that the wrong tree in the wrong place is, can be a danger, especially in our high windstorms that we're seeing. So the focus here is finding the right tree for the right place. And that does take some research and we, that, we strongly support that.
Please, thank you. Just as long as we don't just plant trees in the middle of the road. Oh, sorry, we get that already.
Thank you Chair. You're welcome. Any further questions on Senate Bill 1336? If not, we're going to move on to the last measure on this agenda, that is Senate Bill 1588 relating to nuclear energy. First in our testifiers list, we have Mark Lick from the State Energy Office.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Mark Lick, Hawaii State Energy Office. We stand on our written testimony with comments on this measure. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lick. Keith Neal from Sustainable Energy Hawaii has submitted testimony in support. Madison Schroeder in support. Jack Schreiber in, uh, Jack Schreiber indicated he might be joining us, but no, Jack Schreiber. He submitted testimony in support. Peter Schnerlich has submitted testimony in support. Here's opposition testimony from Linda Williams and Sherry Pollak, I believe is going to join us via Zoom.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of committee. My name is Sherry Pollak and I'm speaking on behalf of 350 Hawaii. We stand in strong opposition to this measure and we stand on a written testimony, but I wish to highlight a couple of points. This bill is not only a distraction from Hawaii achieving our clean energy goals, it could pose a serious harm to our health and our environment. And there is an important issue that needs to be made very clear. This bill states that nuclear energy is quote, a carbon-free electricity. However, this is a false narrative perpetuated by the nuclear industry. There is no such thing as a zero or close to zero emission nuclear reactor. Even existing reactors emit due to the continuous mining and refining of uranium needed for the reactor and other serious concerns regarding the measure, including the transportation of the nuclear fuel, which is creating a serious environmental hazard. Additionally, there is no viable long-term solutions for safely containing the radioactive materials here or anywhere. According to scientists, the lethal radiation must be maintained and funded for at least 200,000 years, or in other words, forever. So we urge the committee to hold this measure. Nuclear energy has no place in Hawaii's clean energy future. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Pollak. Dave Milinix, Greenpeace.
Aloha, Dave Monix here, Greenpeace Hawaii, representing our thousands of members statewide. I agree with that completely. Hawaii's constitution explicitly prohibits nuclear energy here in Hawaii. Creating a nuclear task force is unnecessary because it establishes task forces that would raise time and waste time of our, of our taxpayer resources. Three Mile Island, Chernobyl, Fukushima nuclear power disasters, all have proven nuclear power is not safe, not clean, and not cheap. The 70 years of US government searched the entire planet and found no safe place to store nuclear waste. So this is a very bad idea. I'm sorry to say that. But anyway, we do not need nuclear power in Hawaii. We don't need to study it. It's just a waste of time and money. And please defer this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Milinix. We have opposition testimony from Laurel Brier, Patrice Choi, and Pecathy, Pecathy Lee, and Michael Goodwin. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 1588? Yes.
Good afternoon Chairman and members of the committee. Thank you. My name is Jack Schreiber. I'm sorry, I just didn't stand up fast enough to be recognized earlier. So I stand in support of this bill. I think it would be a wasted opportunity to not look at all of the changes that have happened in the last 40-plus years since the decision was made to, to modify our constitution in opposition of nuclear power. And in my experience, the, we, there is really no viable path to get us all the way to our carbon and sustainability goals without considering all available technologies. So those comments added to my testimony that I provided already. Thank you, I mentioned, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jack. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on 1588? Members, any questions?
I'm not going to. If you, DBED.
Energy Office or?
Energy Office, sorry.
Mark Lick.
Turned out my chair in Brooklyn and I don't know why I lost weight and I stood broken chairs. Sorry, forgive me Chair.
Can be Chair.
Sorry, sir, 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 sorry, Mike, turn out my uncle's freaking delima. Anyway, but my question is, I heard what everybody said on my senior and, you know, I cannot stand with me, I was, I'm just going to tell you that and anything else, but I really was kind of, I don't like to use the word excited, but I was kind of like more open-minded in the sense that we're going to do and study because, you know, the technology with nuclear energy is, is not touched or unheard of in Hawaii. And if we don't do a task force to find out the new technologies, we're not talking about 1882 or something that went happen in Japan. We're talking about different technology. So I just want to know if we pass this thing, is that, is that what you guys, I mean, going work on in trying to establish with this task force?
Senator Phil, if the measure were to pass, we would, in good faith, conduct research to fully understand, you know, the role of small modular renewable nuclear reactors and not, you know, other technology that might be available, hopefully in the near term. But, you know, so far it's, seems to be a little ways off.
Yeah, so you think this would help us not so much reach our goals, but bring down, a lot of families out there, they don't care about the goals, they like know if their electricity going to get lower because everything that we tried so far, nobody's seen really any significant change in the electric bill. Would this help? If it was today, we had it today, would it help our electric bill?
Senator, I mean candidly, if it were here today, it would not help the electric bill because it's too costly. So I think the, the objective for these, particularly these small reactors, is to build them at scale so they can be built cheaper, but that hasn't occurred yet. So I think part of the reason to do research and, you know, we think it might be a little premature right now to do that because how far it is off, they used to be kind of commercially produced, but I think we would want to find out when could they actually drive down costs? Not quite yet.
Thank you Chair, appreciate it.
Sure, members, any further questions? I have a few questions.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just a quick follow-up. I'm getting from the testimony, it sounds like people are thinking this authorizes nuclear energy, but in fact, this bill is about exploring nuclear energy and coming up with data. So then a question would then be asked, is this something we should approve? Fair assessment?
Yeah, that's the way we read it.
Okay, thank you, thank you Chair.
Sure, any further questions? Mr. Lick, in your testimony, you said and you cite that Governor Green has a directive to conduct a full-scale analysis of every possible energy source except nuclear. Why is that?
I believe that the governor, thank you Chair, I believe the governor is simply referring to the constitutional provision that doesn't, that makes it difficult for it to proceed. So I think he's probably just reflecting that.
Okay, well, that constitutional amendment was put forth, I believe in the Concon of 78.
Yes.
So it was created as a part of our constitution, but there could be a day when people Hawaii feel that they want to change the constitution and embrace this. And as Senator Favella mentioned, we have this aspiration, but he doesn't like wind, some people don't like geothermal, some people don't like PV, some people, I mean, wouldn't it be prudent for the state to put every possible tool in the tool chest to look at what could possibly get us to 100%? Because with so many obstructions and naysayers who don't want this or that, we should be putting more opportunities out there, not less, correct?
Yes Chair, I mean, in general, we, we agree with the proposition that we should be driven by science and data and the more science and data, the better.
And on a national level, the rest of the United States, the continent, is actually going more nuclear, where 20% of this country is powered by nuclear. And nuclear is going small modular reactors, no longer the Chernobyl, Fukushima, Three Mile Island, Humangus campus and footprint. It's, it's on a container that you can wheel around. So the technology is dramatically different today than it was in 1978 when we put in this constitutional prohibition, correct?
It's definitely moving in a much different direction and it's just show promise for the future.
Okay, so you still stand by your testimony of being against this measure?
What we commented on was that it may be premature to have a full-scale working group, which I think will probably reveal that there are great opportunities, but still excessive costs in the cost of these small modular reactors. But again, if, if this measure were passed, we would again do good faith effort to get those answers.
I mean, the largest energy sucker in the future is AI. And in the next two years, AI's need for energy is going to increase tenfold. And you see the AWSs, the Microsofts, as they build data centers, they're buying small modular reactors, they're investing in nuclear to power the global desire for more AI. They're not waiting for the independent utility in those jurisdictions to provide them power. So the entire technology world is going nuclear. So if that's the trend, shouldn't we at least look at what Hawaii might want to embrace in the, the nuclear trajectory?
Certainly, we agree that there should be, that we should be tracking this and that we should be conducting research on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lick. Members, any further questions? If not, we're going to take a brief recess prior to taking the vote. Thank you for your patience. We reconvene the Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs for our 302 agenda. First on the agenda is Senate Bill 73 relating to county permits. And we'd like to pass this measure out with just one amendment, and that is to make it a defective date. And that defective date will be May 13th, 2040. Any discussion, members? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes. If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
SB seventy-three, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Decoy, aye. Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. The next bill is Senate Bill one hundred relating to intoxicating liquor. Members, this bill helps nonprofits, particularly a nonprofit on Maui that is having some difficulties in getting some of its board members, and this bill will help the Maui Art Center to be able to get folks to, to, to join their, their board. And get through a liquor commission impediment there on Maui. So I'd like to take the AG's suggested amendments for this measure as well as technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion?
Do you not? Sorry, Chair, just a quick one. I understand the situation went on. Is it criminal, any, any? Criminal history?
As check. This is so that they don't have to get fingerprinted.
Okay.
And so they want to get members from the mainland
Yeah.
to be on their board. And the, the fingerprinting part of it has become a trouble spot for folks that say, I don't want to get fingerprinted. So therefore, the Maui Art Center is not able to get the types of board members that they want. Any further discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB one hundred, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any objections? Or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. We're on to Senate Bill two zero two relating to renewable energy. I'd like to pass this measure out with the Attorney General's suggested amendments, removing succeeding from page two, line twenty-one, that there's an inconsistency there. And we'll take KIUC suggested amendments about taking out, taking them out of the bill. They don't want member-owned electric cooperatives in this measure. And we are going to see that the, right now, the bill states that the rates will be at the retail rate. We're going to change that and allow the PUC to set whatever that rate will be to credit customers. So those are the suggested amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB two oh two, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Members present, do we have any objections? Or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. The next measure is Senate Bill one, two, three, four relating to governmental efficiency. Members, this will help our state agencies and partner better and more efficiently with sister agencies in the federal as well as, as council levels. And the suggestion is to pass this measure with a defective date of May thirteenth, twenty forty. Any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB twelve thirty-four, recommendation from the Chairs to pass with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Do we have any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And on Senate Bill thirteen thirty-six relating to the greenhouse gas sequestration task force, we are, excuse me, skinning down government. Most of the time, we add projects and, and responsibilities, but this was actually us taking it off the book. So the recommendation is to pass this measure out as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB thirteen thirty-six, Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended. With all members present, are there any objections or whether they? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. And members of the last measure, Senate Bill fifteen eighty-eight relating to nuclear energy. This is a bill that just explores the opportunities, not mandating, it's not setting the court that we will do anything other than look at where the nuclear opportunities are. The rest of the country is definitely going nuclear, and we have a prohibition due to the constitution to prohibit that for the, for the time being. But if perhaps we see that there is great value for firm renewable power as well as cheap firm renewable power, that might be something that we might take up in, in the future. So the study, we'll just look at that opportunity for, for the state to go down this path. So I'd like to recommend that we pass this measure with a defective date of May thirteenth, twenty forty. Members, any discussion?
Yeah, Chair, yeah, I'll be voting with a hard yes because we need to put everything in the tool chest, like you said. So we got to be more mindful of what's happening around other areas because we're always behind century-old stuff. So I'm just saying that we don't go for it, but I agree, we need to put everything in the tool chest. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I like that hard yes in the tool chest. You can be like our Home Depot senator with all the tools. Okay, so the recommendation is just that, that defective date I mentioned. Any further discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB fifteen eighty-eight, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the presence of all senators, all members. Do we have any objections? Any reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Great, thank you, members. We are adjourned. We are back again for the Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs on this February fourth at three o'clock in room zero one six, members. We have, we heard a number of bills with our friends from the Government Operations Committee last week, and as you recall, a number of them, we deferred action until today. The first measure on this agenda is Senate Bill one, six, one relating to county permitting and inspection. And this was a bill that would help streamline the permitting process a lot of times for our housing projects. And but if you recall, H C D A had some concerns that there are certain things that the counties do that the state really has no expertise nor the manpower to oversee. So we allow them to give us some suggested amendments, and I think I passed out those suggested amendments to you. But for the, uh, full transparency to the public, I'd just like to kind of or tell you what those amendments are. We shall replace the shall be exempt to may be exempted, delete inspection and certificate of occupancy provisions. We're going to add recommended language by D N R regarding flood hazardous areas. And we're going to delete mandatory provisions for state agencies to not apply for building permits. Add in a provision for programmatic or project-specific coordination. Add to provision for regular reporting about exempted, exempted permits. Adds a provision for a working group to address the issues with state permitting and provide an interim report to the legislature and add a defective date of May thirteenth, twenty forty. Those are the amendments agreed to by this committee and Government Affairs. Any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB one sixty-one, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Decoy?
Aye.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. On another measure that was deferred till today, that is Senate Bill ninety-two. Our pals from G V O are circulating on more amendments, so we are going to vote on that measure on February sixth at three o'clock in this room, zero one six. The next measure is Senate Bill six, three, five relating to energy efficiency. And we'd like to, the two Chairs have conferred, we'd like to pass this measure with amendments. And the amendments will be to have the Hawaii State Energy Office take lead on the survey with DAGs providing technical assistance. We're going to assign priority for the required state facilities, cost-effective energy efficiency measures to first responder facilities. That was taken from Senate Bill seven hundred, and we're going to make the defective date of twenty four ninety-one. Any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
SB six thirty-five, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Do we have any reservations? Or objections? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. The next measure is Senate Bill seven hundred relating to renewable energy. The G V O Chair has recommended a number of amendments to this measure. The first being that the State Energy Office, we're working in conjunction with the State Departments to conduct a feasibility study. It's going to remove distributed energy systems as is in Senate Bill four, one, two, which is already passed. And it's going to provide a defective date of twenty four ninety-one. Any discussion, members? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB seven hundred, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Do we have any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay. The last bill on this agenda is Senate Bill eight, six, nine relating to community outreach boards. This is setting up the mechanism so our friends from the Big Island can enjoy the beauty of having neighborhood boards like those of us on along. Be careful, Big Island. We're going to make a few amendments to this bill, taking the public first law center suggested amendments on page four, line five, and delete or organize, because these boards operate under a county commission or department who manage the scheduling and coordination. And we're going to create, have a defective date of twenty four ninety-one. Those are the two amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
For SB eight sixty-nine, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any objections or reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Richard. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Members, if you could sit tight, we have one more agenda. That is a three oh one agenda. And this is to discuss a short-form bill. That short-form bill number is Senate Bill eight, nine, seven relating to energy. I posted the contents of this bill, and essentially what this bill is trying to do is to make sure that the Public Utilities Commission hires Hawaii Energy Reliability Administrator. So you can think of this person as an energy traffic cop that's going to help move permitting and really move projects along. I will say, I made a mistake in putting in other language that talks about a wildfire fund as well as as expanding the powers of that Hawaii electricity reliable administrator. When we hear the bill in, when, whenever we have it scheduled, I assure you, I'm going to take that part out. We're only going to talk about the role of Hera and making sure that our energy traffic cop gets us to a better place. So for purposes of this hearing, we are going to be inserting the contents of the proposed S D one that I had floated to all of you earlier, posted in the short form bill. And that's going to go into this bill, Senate Bill eight, nine, seven. And in terms of voting, we have to vote for, so it's just kind of a different confusing one. So we're going to pass, we're going to recommit. Okay, pass with amendments and then recommit this bill. We're going to vote on it on the floor in the next few days, and then this bill is going to actually come back for us, and we're going to actually have a hearing on it. So that's kind of the process as we move forward with the short form bill. So the recommendation is that we pass this measure with amendments to recommit SB eight, nine, seven. Members, any discussion?
So the eight, nine, seven is the short form bill.
Yep. With the new language that we'll discuss at a later date. If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
So for SB eight nine seven, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments and to recommit. Chair votes yes, Vice Chair votes yes, Senator Decoy?
Yes.
Senator Richards?
Yes.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted.
Great. Thank you for your time, everyone. We are adjourned.